Father God, we pause, we pray for the country, God, we pray for all of the hate, Father God, we pray that one hate deed is not power or another hate movement. Father, we pray for all the leaders of this country, potential leaders, Father, we pray that everything tonight here be done decent and ought to put a smile on your face, God. We continue to give you glory, we pray that you continue to bless those on summer break if they're here up to come back in a few days. God bless us all, God bless us real good, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, number two, adoption of the agenda.
Move.
Moved by Ms. Mildred, seconded by Mr. Payton. Everybody?
Good evening, everybody. As you all know, this July 1st is my first official day. Mr. Daly and I have worked together over the past few months trying to get ready for the transition, and he was very helpful in that, and I appreciate all of his assistance. Something I wanted to say last month, and we decided to put it off till I started, was first of all, thank you all, board members, for selecting me to serve as superintendent, and I want you to know you feel free to call me anytime, I can be of assistance to you. If I have any concerns you have in the district, anything you want me to look into or take care of, you may call, and I'll be glad to do what I can. Some important dates for you, of course, the students are not in school now, so we don't have enrollment numbers to go over like we normally do, but I will give you some important dates. All the building secretaries return today to prepare for registration. We've got new teacher orientation coming up on July 23rd. Teachers will return on the 25th, and we'll have our district-wide meeting. July 17th through the 30th, students will have open registration, and of course, the students will return on July 31st. Just a few other things I wanted to mention. Ms. Kelsey Lambert and I met with Ms. Horn Tents Bass, y'all probably know her. Years ago, they did a natural resource field day for fifth grade students. Well, when her husband passed in 2018, it was canceled for a number of years, and then COVID came, but she wants to resume that this year and take all the district fifth graders, or invite them to the Bass Tree Farm for a field day, and I gave my approval for her to meet with fifth grade principals to start planning that. We hope to get it done, or plan it for the Thursday before Good Friday, before we get out for Easter break. I'm excited about it, and I hope we can get it done. I want to say congratulations to local Lawrence County, nine-year district Dixie youth baseball team, they're going to compete in Little League World Series, and Laurel starting Thursday, July 18th. So if anybody can make their way down there to support them, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. That's a tough group of guys there. Other than that, we've got next month, we'll be talking about the second, second, third part of Policy G on personnel. Next regularly scheduled board meeting is for August the 19th, next month. And that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, sir. All right, number seven, consent agendas seven one through seven nine.
Move.
Ms. Mildred moves, I'll second. All right, let's vote, sorry. Five oh. All right, now we got consent agendas eight one through eight fourteen.
Move.
Moved by Dr. Bridges.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Payton, and let's vote. Five oh. All right, number nine, request a paper policy be the first, there was changes.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Oh, the changes, I look at.
You put them.
The board policy, and Ms. Alicia can fine tune this, she is too, but board policy called for if a teacher's absent for two hours or more, it'd be dock for half a day, to give them a little more leniency or leverage there, we decided we made it where they can, it reads like this, if you're absent for one to two hours, it's a quarter of a day, two to four, a half a day, four to six, two-thirds, and if it's obviously beyond that, you're absent a whole day. So if a teacher has to take their kid to the doctor for an appointment, it's only going to take two hours, they don't have to take a whole day off, they just take a quarter of a day and then come in after that. So it's designed to obviously cut down on absences, you know, teacher absences, but also to give them a little more flexibility and with their leave.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote. Five oh. All right, number ten, discussion with board attorneys about draft policy for social media commenting policy.
Well, you know, some of the other districts, I'm assuming y'all want me to start talking right now, or do y'all want to put it on the floor first?
We'll go ahead, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
That's an optional policy where, if, say, for instance, we take some type of action against an employee, and they got some type of, it's just to keep folks from getting on social media, feeling like they can say what they want to, and, or on our page, or any of our employees on our page, we're not trying to take nobody's freedom from speech, but one of the things that a code of ethics says, I think it's section five, says you can't make harmful or injurious statements about a school district or district employee. Also, we want, we want it to be where if somebody puts something on our page, it's not, it don't shed light on, it's not saying we condone anything somebody, a disgruntled employee, or somebody put on the school's webpage. It's just sort of, you know, give some little guidelines or put a frame in there, and it was just something one of our other districts adopted, and I just wanted to share it with you all to see if you wanted to do something like that.
Sounds good to me. Do we have to have the superintendent to recommend it before we can?
This is for first reading.
Okay.
And then you would, if you want to approve it, you can approve it at the board, this next board, y'all just bend and then look at it. Sir?
So are we having problems with somebody commenting on social media?
This is something that happened in another school district, and I would just, and it's another school district adopted, so I want to just bring it to y'all's attention as an option. No, we don't have no problem, as far as I know, if none of our employees do that.
And so it's just saying basically that they say something, the comment will be removed?
You're right, but, and if they say something that can give the board some exposure, this is a disclaimer, more or less saying, hey, we don't condone everything, or we don't tolerate certain things, we can post it on our social media page or our school page.
All right, thank you so much. All right, number eleven, Ms. Sandy Brown. I'm gonna get my clock.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Cindy Brown, and I'm the mayor for the town of New Hebron. Two months ago, I came to share three points with the school board, and I was only able to make one of those points for my allotted time. Since that night, you've made some effective changes, I feel like, to the format of your board meetings, eliminating the public comments, I believe has brought some positive change to the board meetings. So I'll start with sort of the second thing that I had. During the timeframe that the New Hebron School Report Card was failing, the federal government required a community action committee to be formed. I was privileged to be a part of that group, and thankfully, from the work of the principal and the hard-working teachers there, they were able to turn that failing grade into a C, and just a few points from a B, and that was no small feat. I applaud their efforts. However, in the process with these meetings, we learned that even though students had state-of-the-art laptops and tablets provided for by the school district, at school, they had internet connection, but at home, they didn't. Since then, I found out that the teachers are not sending homework home to be completed on those devices. At the time, you know, to me, that's concerning, because children learn with that constant repetition of doing, of doing work. The explanation was that knowing that some of the children did not have internet access at home, the teachers stopped assigning work to do at home. New Hebron School serves several, has several rural communities, just like the rest of Lawrence County. The areas are remote, and no internet service provider serves the area well. While technology is wonderful, the children are only able to compete, complete that work at school, the infrastructure for Wi-Fi is not there to support the technology that has been implemented by the school district. It's concerning to me personally that the children in Lawrence County are testing barely proficient and some under. The community action committee never had the opportunity to implement the plan for bringing the school report card up, because during the next testing cycle, the children scored better. However, us being given the opportunity, we did have a plan. We found that the disconnect was, from speaking to teachers and administrators, was not just at school, the disconnect was when the children left the school and went home. Some of our Lawrence County students are being housed by grandparents and other family members, some have only one-parent household. What we found is that a great number of children are basically on their own when they leave the school, some are not even getting proper nourishment, much less help with homework, and are you aware that some of our schools have washers and dryers now, because children don't even have the bare necessities, clean clothes to wear? The problem in our county is more than just our school system. Our community action committee plan was to have community volunteer centers after school manned by a group of retired teachers, laypeople, ordained ministers who could get their church membership involved to help these underserved children. While test scores are important, you have a greater responsibility to how our communities are failing, the most vulnerable population in this county. I've heard over the years that the reason that you ran for school board is to make a difference. The only thing I see personally is just trying to keep the school superintendent. I see community pastors come to meetings begging for consolidation, new building plans, new school employee raises, but I wonder how many of these pastors could be making a positive impact if they were to take the initiative to help their own students in their congregation? There's a whole generation of children who are being lost. Teachers can only do so much in the classroom. What is needed can't be accomplished during 7:45 to 2:45. There's a tremendous number of children in this district that need help with their school work. Where does this need to help the most vulnerable group of these children fall in your list of priorities? Are you willing to look for grants to have after-school programs, or ask community pastors to volunteer for after-school programs? Has the school board met with state officials to push for implementing the broadband initiative for Lawrence County? And do you even know where Lawrence County stands in getting this high-speed broadband internet? My second point is I believe that the board's actions and enactions are fueling the private school growth in our surrounding towns, as well as parents opting for homeschool their children. Only five to six years ago, there were 400 students on New Hebron's campus, today, there's a few over 200. A nearly 50% decrease in enrollment. For the 2017-18 school year, Lawrence County School District enrollment was 2,076 children. For 2024, 23-24, the district ended with 1,680 students. That's a loss of 396 students. Using $6,000 per student, the district is getting about $2.5 million less now than what you were getting. If you, this was a business, a corporate business, and you had lost $2 million, $2.5 million worth of business, y'all would have lost your jobs, you know? Why is this happening? I don't think it's because folks have stopped having babies. Those who can afford the choice have taken their children elsewhere, and it's disheartening to me as a mayor to see a private school bus picking children up that used to be part of a community public school. If this isn't concerning to you, there's a huge disconnect between the board and the actual communities that you represent. Are these numbers living in Lawrence County School District important to you? Just from the outside looking in, if you've lost more than 400 students, your operations should be less, or if your operating cost is still high, there's a problem. How are you going to make $2 million of income up? There comes a point when you can't continue to tax the public for the district's loss. The old saying is still relevant today, you can't continue to do the things the way that you've always have and expect a different, a different outcome. My third point tonight concerns the emergency response plan to the Lawrence County School District. Each time I've met with new superintendents, I have asked to be involved. Over the last four superintendents, I have yet to be contacted. You see, the reason each time there's a school lockdown, it seems to be that I'm the last community leader to know. These plans are privileged to the public, but as elected officials, it is imperative that you include the mayors in this plan. New Hebron is a good 20 minutes away from the sheriff's office or the closest hospital. We usually have one officer available at any given town. When something happens on the campus that would cause a lockdown, the local elected official should be notified. When media outlets are called to looking for information, the public official is the first person that they contact, and I'm requesting that the elected officials be made a part of that plan for the 2023-2024 year going forward. One of the main reasons I've come, and I've taken the time to come be a part of the meeting tonight, is my belief that some of the personal agendas and actions of some of the school board members are having a negative impact on this county's school system. Remember, you have a broad audience watching you on YouTube each month. I ask that you choose your words carefully, exercise good grammar, this is not a popularity power show. You are responsible for the future of the Lawrence County public school system. You board members are the public face of the school system, and I implore you to work with this new superintendent. You will always have people who do not agree with you, but you simply can't get down in the mud with them. Be strong, be unified, surround yourself with people who can give you the best legal advice that can be had, follow the rules of parliamentary procedures, and make changes where change is needed. Also, to me personally, if you can't keep your personal agendas from bleeding over to the school board meetings, you might need to consider, you know, where you stand in serving. But I thank you for the opportunity of letting me come and speak, and Superintendent Daly, I wish you the best, and look forward to working with you.
All right, executive session, number twelve. I move.
Very good.
Taken by Ms. Mildred. I move. I move. Thank you.
All right, so we accepted to release one student. We accepted the superintendent's recommendation on a student to enter the school district pending release from their current school district, and we denied a parent request. I move, Weacher.
Very good.
Oh.
She lost.
She lost. She lost.